Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, October 6th, 6:30 p.m., public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2025-104, utility grant of location, National Grid Verizon, West Quantum Street at Arlington Street. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like to show your support or opposition and have it recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So would, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the next, we'll go to the next one, 6:31. I'd like to call the Monday, October 6th, 6:31, public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2025-105, utility grant of location, National Grid Verizon, Federal Ave at Goddard Street. So at this point, again, I'd like to ask anybody wishing to come up, speak in favor, come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak and would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at, on the, at the, in the back of the chamber. So, seeing none, no further public. I will close this hearing at, it's still 6:31. And I believe we can almost start the next one. So I'd like to call the Monday, October 6th, 6:32 p.m., public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2025-106, utility grant of location, National Grid Verizon, Chubak Street at Washington Street and Raycroft Ave. So at this point, again, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet at the table at the back of the chambers. And seeing none, I'd like to, seeing no public comment, I'd like this public hearing to end at 6:32. We'll be back in less than a minute for the final public hearing. Okay. I'd like to call the Monday, October 6th, 6:33 p.m., public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2025-113, utility grant of location, National Grid Gas, General Dunford Drive in Hancock Street, 101 General McConville Way. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address, and if you do not wish to speak but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So seeing none, I'll close this hearing at, yes, at 6:33, and we'll be back in two minutes to start the council meeting. Thank you very much.
Call the Monday, October 6th, 2025, City Council Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Devine.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Minton.
Present.
President King.
Present.
Nine members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would everyone please stand to observe a moment of silence? Please use this moment as you will. Please turn to the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, please.
Honoring 75 years of Quincy Youth Football and Cheer.
And tonight, Counselor Noel DeBona will be honoring 75 years of Quincy Youth Football and Cheer. President recognizes Counselor DeBona.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we are honoring the 75th year anniversary of the Quincy Youth Football and Cheerleading Association. There are a lot of great people over the years that volunteered to help coach and mentor the kids of Quincy. We'll be recognizing the board members here to my right, a lot of the players with their uniforms on, and the cheerleaders are behind us as well, as well as some of the kids from the flag football program. You know, going back in little history of the Quincy Youth Football League, they were founded in 1950 and played their first season in 1951 with four teams, the North Quincy Apaches, Quincy Point Panthers, Houseneck Manettes, and back then it was called the Mayo's Clubs All-Stars, which in 1959 became the West Quincy Elks. Bill Chubbamire started as a player in 1951 for the Panthers and later became a coach, rising to head coach, and then franchise holder for the next 38 years until his retirement in 1998. Just this past weekend, we recognized everybody at the stadium, and Frank Brilla was there. He also coached the Panthers for 38 years, and he, the only time he missed was when he was serving in Vietnam. Joe Desmond worked various capacities in the North Quincy Apaches, beginning in 1961, where his son Daniel and daughter Kathleen joined the program. All eight of his children and then 12 of his grandchildren have gone through the Apaches and Quincy Youth Football Program and Cheer. We also have the Houseneck Manettes and the West Quincy Elks, as well as the Squanum Storm, and they were the sailors established in 1976. So over the course of the years, up until 2018, with the Quincy Youth Football League, they played all of each other and also included Milton Mustangs from a neighboring town. But in 2018, all the teams combined for one team per grade, and they're now called the Quincy United, standing next to my left here. They have the nice uniforms with the stars and stripes. I had the privilege of playing for my Quincy Point neighborhood team, the Panthers, and later coached for them for seven years. And today, I helped coach alongside Sean Chooch-Halpin on the seventh grade team, and our kids are here tonight. Tonight, there are, you know, many players and audience that really instill the good news about the city of Quincy. We're here to recognize these board members for all their efforts with the league, their dedication, and mentoring for them, you know? In celebration of the 75 years remarkable service, dedication, and community experience, we proudly recognize Quincy Youth Football and Cheer, leading associations for their unwavering commitment to providing opportunities for our youth to grow, compete, and thrive. Through dedication to decades of volunteer leadership, tireless effort, and heartfelt dedication, you have created a foundation of teamwork, discipline, and pride, shaping generations both on and off the field. Thank you for your caring legacy moving forward, ensuring that the values of sportsmanship, perseverance, and community remain strong in the hearts of our youth. Your efforts have made a lasting impression and continue to inspire for the next generation. And I want to thank all the members that are here, the board members, there's a seven board member here, our president, Nathan Knowles. Thank you, Nathan, for being here tonight. He can't do it without her, with his wife, Michelle Corey, right here. Vice President Sean Chooch-Halpin, sitting next to her. She's right behind us, she does a great job with the cheer program, Stacy LeMay, over We also have John McNeil. And Matt Gardner. All of you guys can just take a quick rise up. I'd like to give it to you. Before I have Nathan come up here and any of the board members that want to speak, I'd like to also recognize our players and cheerleaders and flag football program kids for being here tonight. Why don't you guys all take a, come on up and get a big cheer. We'd also like to thank the parents and guardians of these children for helping them get into practices and everything, and we want to thank the, the parents and the guardians up in the back. So why don't you guys come on, and other coaches in the league as well, the volunteers, I'd like to hold this over, if I could, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, and Nathan Knowles, our president, would come forward and like to recognize everybody out there in City Council.
Thank you, Noel.
Mayor Koch, members of Quincy City Council, friends, thank you for inviting us here this evening and for allowing me to say a few prepared remarks. Seventy-five years of continuous service is remarkable achievement for Quincy Youth Football and Cheer. Seventy-five years is not just a number, it's a measurement of generations who have passed down commitment to our children. It's a testament to what we can accomplish when we work together, year after year, team after team, generation after generation. We truly are grateful for the recognition from this council and from Mayor Tom Koch. This milestone is only possible because our city understands the value of investing in our children. We pay special thank you to Mayor Koch and the Quincy Parks Department for their commitment to building and maintaining fields where dreams take root, fields that are now among the finest in the entire region. And we especially recognize Counselor Noel DeBona, who has supported our program and coached in our program for many years, as well as counselors Bill Harris, Dave McCarthy, and Scott Campbell, for their longstanding support of both youth football and high school football in the city. We believe that Quincy Youth Football and Cheer is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, continuously run youth football and cheer town program of its kind in the entire nation. It's a testament to the people like Chubbamire, Joe Desmond, and many of the other great men and women who first laid the foundation for this program. They understood that when you invest in the potential of a child, you invest in and strengthen our community. They are true strength and legacy of Quincy Youth Football and Cheer. It's not in the X's and O's, the wins and losses, the strength of the program lies with the men and women who answer the call to service. To every coach, every staff member, every volunteer, past and present, who have devoted countless hours, you are the foundation of this program. You don't just teach blocking and tackling, you teach discipline. You don't just teach cheer routines, you teach teamwork. You teach our children that when you fall down, you get back up. You show them that success is not just about a final score, but about the character you build on that journey. You're doing the essential, critical work of building our next great generation. And to our current board, John McNeil, Steve Kosky, Matt Gardner, who is our Director of Football Operations, Stacy LeMay, who is the Director of our Cheer Operations, Michelle Corey, who is our treasurer and runs all of our administrative operations, and Sean Halpin, who's, as Noel mentioned, family's history in this program stretches back to the 1950s. Thank you for carrying the torch and lifting the program to new heights. We look forward to another 75 years of growth and success and the opportunity to serve the kids of Quincy.
Mr. President, I'd also just like to recognize as well as Steve Kosky has spent 38 years with the program, and he's here tonight, right here. And I'd also like to give a shout out to Amy Sampson, that does a lot of the photos for us over the years. She's done a real good job with us, so. She was out for the, recognizing the games last week, so, thank you. What we do, Mr. President, if we could, if we could take a photo with the seven board members, and then we can also get the, the players and the cheerleaders in there as well.
Yeah, great. Yeah, team photo.
Team photo.
All right, let's go.
Team spirit.
We'll take a brief recess. Ready? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number one, 2025-116, order approval of Quincy Retirement Board acceptance of disabled employees' supplemental annual allowance.
As this was put forward by the mayor, the president recognizes the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker.
Mr. President, through you to the body, before you, tonight, you have a memo from Executive Director of the Retirement Board, Brad Kroll, relative to the adoption of this act of the legislature. Essentially, what this is, very briefly, is prior to 1996, survivors of disability pensioners of the city of Quincy, if that pensioner did not die of the disability to which he was awarded the pension, the death benefit was a total of $550 a month. There was a special act in 2010 that allowed cities and towns to raise that number to $750 a month, and the Retirement Board voted recently unanimously to recommend that we make that change, and that is what is before the body this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Any questions, comments, motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Liang on the motion. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President King.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Number two, 2025-117, order municipal broadband project use of Chapter 149A, design, build, delivery method of procurement.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Counsel Liang. Motion approved, seconded by, anyone, seconded by Counselor Harris on the motion. President recognizes Counsel McCarthy.
Is this a, is this a change?
Yep, didn't even get a chance, you guys are so quick.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, we had a technical error in the last go around when we approved this process for the design build, so this is correcting that mistake, and we move forward as originally planned. And as always, I appreciate this body's support, I appreciate the mayor's support, and the bodies that came before us for the seven-plus years that we've now worked on this project. So.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Any further comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Counselor.
Oh, sorry. On the motion, president recognizes Counselor Ash.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did, if we could maybe do, if you had an update on the project in general, I know the last update that you put out was March. I appreciated it, because, you know, the pilot neighborhoods being Marymount and Quincy Point, that was a great update. And I know it very well may be that we're still there because we had to, some housekeeping with this specific ordinance, but I didn't know if you had a rough timeframe on the next kind of step in the project, if we have control over anything, or if I can share any updates with, with my, my constituents.
Absolutely. There are three parts to this project that are very much moving, that will determine the next steps. The project as is with Phase One, which was to govern Quincy Point and Marymount areas, is still in play. This will govern the construction of those phases, this document moving that forward, which we had already approved, we had already gone through a process, but had to go back to this step. The next portion was that we approved a revenue bond, which is being approved at the state level, that was last in third reading, according to Senator Keenan, who's been shepherding that through, so we're waiting for that. And the third part, which allows us to continue to move forward, is that there's a community process that will soon begin, that will start to engage residents directly to start getting commitments for this project, so it'll start actually marketing and selling this project so that people can subscribe, which is how the revenue bond is funded, on the backs of the subscribers. So we're, we're moving. This was, obviously, we wanted to move this forward months ago, but due to this technical error, we just had to take a step. So ideally, you know, I don't think construction will realistically start until next year, but at least the, the forward progress on the commitments and the financing can move forward.
So the, the revenue bond, just, so the, the revenue bond process is not being held up for the construction, they're kind of all moving?
It's all moving, yeah, all moving concomitantly, if you will.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. President recognizes Counsel Devine.
Well, as I was campaigning the first year, that was one of the biggest things is, you know, competition for internet and high speed and all that. If that goes well in the, next year and gets started, roughly, and I'm not looking for hard numbers, but what will be, we've been looking at, if it works, are we five years out for getting it through the city, or 10?
For the, for a citywide build?
Yeah.
I mean, I think five is a conservative estimate for a citywide build, you got to get through phases one and two.
Yeah, I'm saying very loosely, I'm just curious, like, is it?
Because I think how this will go is, if, if this becomes as popular as we think and hope it'll be, then people will want it faster, right? And then that will probably determine the speed with which the construction happens and with the support of people like our DPW Commissioner, et cetera.
Well, if everything went well, five years, if not maybe 10, no?
Again, I would say, I'd give the lower bound, but again, I think it's about getting this word out. This community engagement process is very important because I think this project has taken, you know, it's a huge infrastructure project, it's taken, it's taken a long time. People need to understand what are the key determinants, what are the financial requirements that will bind them to this project, that will then facilitate this project being able to be constructed.
Right. Okay, and just for anybody out there listening, these are not hard numbers, I'm just trying to get an idea, just so we can say it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Devine. Did you have something to say, Counsel Walker? I was gonna say you wish, but I don't think you wish. Mr. Walker.
Just to add on to what you said, very briefly, Mr. President, that, and we've talked a little bit about this internally with the team, that the two neighborhoods, it's not necessarily, if it works, if the pilot proves itself and we're going forward, we sort of see it, I think, as the team, that it's the pilot, the two pilot neighborhoods first, and then it's the rest of the city. We're not going in 17 different phases and picking off neighborhood by neighborhood, that there'll be the pilot program in the two selected neighborhoods, and if that is successful, then it would be the larger citywide project. So I think that's why we think that five years is a, is an outside number, but this has been a long, pretty complicated process to begin with, so we wouldn't want to put anything into, finalize any, any dates or anything like that, but.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President King.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes our regularly scheduled council meeting. Approval of previous meeting minutes, motion approved made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel DeBona, all is in favor. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Madam Clerk.
Yes, I do have a traffic request to refer to Ordinance Committee for Advertising Ward Four, Counselor Devine, add two stop signs at Kimball Street and Campbell Street, creating a four-way stop.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Unfinished business in proceeding meeting, seeing none. Reports of committees, Public Works Committee Chair Harris.
Thank you. We held public hearings this evening prior to the council meeting for the following orders, 2025-104, utility grant of location, National Grid Verizon, West Quantum Street at Arlington Street. Positive recommendation from Public Works Committee, motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Counsel DeBona. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President King.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next one, 2025-105, utility grant of location, National Grid Verizon, Federal Ave at Goddard Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee, motion to approve.